Communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution 18-1, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, however, there is no public input permitted at this meeting. We have some presentations moving along to Agenda Item A. Mr. Hoagie?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hoagie is going to give us an update on fire conditions and restrictions in the Gila National Forest.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
So I just wanted to come and give you an update on where we stand with fire season on the Gila National Forest and give you some statistics for this season and just share with you what type of season we have. So, a couple of pieces of good news and maybe one piece of not-so-good news. The two good pieces are obviously it's raining. Number two is we escaped a potentially very busy, very bad fire season. We were leading into this season in May with all of our indices climbing, all of our fuels were drying out very rapidly, we were entering into a drought situation, and the potential was there for it to be very busy, very active, similar to a 2013 silver fire season. So, luckily, we did not have that. And we had, we did get somewhat busy. I think we ended up with about 56,000 acres burned on the Gila National Forest. And so that leads me into the piece of not-so-good news, and I'll share with you the numbers now, the statistics from this season. So, let's see here, bear with me. So we had a total of 35 fires, which is pretty low for the Gila. We typically range around 100 fires a year at least. We've seen a decrease in that number over the past 10 years. But anyway, so for this year, we had a total of 35 fires for 56,126 acres. Of those 35, we had 16 lightning fires, which were roughly about 5,500 acres. The cause of the other fires were man-caused. So we had a total of 50,600 acres in man-caused fires. And that included the Buzzard Fire up on the Reserve District, which was our largest fire this season. It was, came out to be 50,296 acres on the Buzzard alone. So that's the not-so-great news. You know, we had an increase in the number of human-caused darts. We did go into fire restrictions early on. We went, we were in stage one for about three weeks, and then we went into stage two restrictions, which is, stage one is basically smoking and campfire restrictions. You know, the public can have fires in established rings in established campgrounds. The big metal, you know, 55-gallon drum looking kind of rings. Once we go into stage two restrictions, then there's no fires at all whatsoever, and, you know, we still ended up with some human-caused fires regardless of what stage of restrictions we were in. So, just wanted to share that. Currently, you know, it's raining, our indices have dropped because of the drought that we were trending into and our ERCs and fuels that were trending very high. We've dropped down to a moderate fire behavior at this point. It takes time for those fuels to recover. The pine fuels, obviously, the grasses and the twigs, they recover a lot quicker and respond more to humidity. Those are primarily the carrier fires. But our large fuels, the big logs, you know, the duff, which is the layer above the soil, below the pine needles, that stuff takes longer to soak up the moisture and to recover. So currently, you know, we're recovering, but we're at a moderate, a moderate fire danger, basically. So, that's kind of where we're at, you know, at this point in time. We, you know, as we trend down and we continue to get more moisture, we start releasing our resources here. We release our, our resources that we had visiting from other states that came down to help us out during our fire season. Most of those have already gone home back to Oregon or Washington or Montana. Those engines and crews and smokejumpers, they've all gone at this point. And we're, you know, we're basically down to our resources, and we're, we have a drawdown level, which is basically, it's tied to our, our fire danger. And the lower our fire danger gets, the more resources, our local stuff that we can send up to help in other places. So right now, Oregon got an abundant amount of lightning over the past several days, so do Northern California. We've already sent an engine up there to go and help out. We'll continue to do that as those requests come in, so. And we maintain around four, three to four engines here on the forest to respond to any new fires that we get. It, it sounds like from, the Wildlife Service is predicting that we're going to go into a little bit of a drying trend over the next eight to 10 days, so a little bit of a taper off in the monsoon moisture. And, you know, they're saying that, that we're going to be drier than normal and warmer than normal. So, so normal this time of year is wet, so it's just, it just means that it's going to taper a little bit, and we're going to see a little bit less moisture and probably some higher temperatures, but we still will be getting some of that monsoon moisture, that thunderstorm activity, so. Yeah, so with that drying trend, you know, I would, we're going to get busy again. It's not going to be anything like the large fire season that we have in May or June because the humidities will be higher, but we are expecting to see lots of single snag fires, single green tree fires that are out there that have survived, survived the rainstorms and, and just kind of, you know, are smoldering or just kind of barely hanging on. As we go into this drying trend, we'll see an uptick in the number of, of smoke reports and fire, fire reports that come in from our lookout towers. So, expect we'll be busy, and, you know, we appreciate the public, they call in and they let us know when they see stuff as well. We had a couple of calls today last night for fires up near Reserve, so as an example. We just, it's that time of year, our snag season, I call it, so. Any questions?
On the human-caused fires, what is the primary, is it campfires? Do you know what the primary source of human-caused fires is?
Yeah, the, the majority of them are campfires. Campfires that are unintended, campfires that are, you know, especially when we're in restrictions, campfires that occur outside those fire rings, and people just don't put them up. So, they leave them unintended, they, they walk away, and, you know, it's really tough to, we, we have fire investigators, but it's really tough to go out and actually find the person that, that caused that fire.
So do you think that that is lack of education or carelessness?
Um, I'd say it's carelessness. You know, I, I think that the people that are going to attend, the people that don't comply with the restrictions are always going to be there. I think, you know, you're going to have those people, I think probably 95% of the population, you know, accepts and supports and, you know, and follows the, those restrictions. But I think there's that, you know, 3% or 4% that just don't, don't care.
Three questions? Thank you, appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions? Agenda Item B, we have a report from, sorry, a program overview from Wildlife Services. Mr. May, Mr. Bayes, Mr. Pierce are here with us today.
Thank you.
Welcome, good morning.
Good morning. Thank God for rain. I was here last night eating downtown, enjoying a wonderful meal, and I couldn't figure out why everybody kept getting up, going out to the window, taking pictures, looking down the street, while I found out as we got ready to leave, the road was closed. So I'll send a little bit of this rain north for the rest of us, we appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager Webb and others here. My name is Alan May, I'm a wildlife biologist, and I'm the State Director representing USDA Wildlife Services here in New Mexico. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here today to provide a little information to support our budget request for $37,500 for our co-操作 wildlife damage management program. I've got a little one-page overview letter I'd like to pass out to you guys, if that's okay.
Sure, thanks.
First, for those of you who may not be familiar with Wildlife Services, let me tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do. We help resolve a wide variety of wildlife conflicts, including property damage like builders and lawn gardens, sanitation problems caused by pigeons on buildings in town, woodpeckers that make holes in the sides of people's houses, and a variety of other issues. We respond to human safety concerns such as wildlife at airports that poses a danger to landing or departing aircraft. We work with human health issues as well. Some of you have been around for a while, may remember several years ago when we had the fox rabies epidemic here. Our, our program helped out with that as well, along with Department of Health and several other agencies. We respond to requests for assistance when there is suspected predation of livestock, and many of you probably know that's the bulk of the work that we do here in Grant County. And that's often the component of our work that draws the most attention. This is a cost-share program, so the funding that Grant County provides is matched with federal funds to support one position here. Excuse me. Our wildlife specialist in Grant County is Mr. Brandon Jones, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here today because he's traveling out of state, but I, I do understand he came by last week to visit with some of you to check in, to see if you had any questions he might be able to answer. I do have Mr. Ray Pierce here today. He assists Brandon with field activities, and if you have questions about some of the recent field work that's been happening here, I think Ray might be able to help answer questions or at least get answers for later. So when it comes to the livestock work, confirmation of a cause of livestock death is a vital step for establishing any need for predator damage management and the appropriate response necessary to resolve the problem. So our wildlife specialists look for physical evidence like bite marks, hemorrhaging under the skin, tracks or scat in the area. The condition of wounds of a newborn calf can help determine whether it was stillborn or walked after being born. If the livestock is confirmed killed by predators and the predators identify, course of action is planned. So, concerns have been expressed that some of the tools and methods we use are dangerous or they kill too many non-target wildlife. These tools include traps, snares, the M44, spring-loaded cyanide ejector, and ground or aerial control. The fact is, we did not kill a single non-target animal in Grant County last year, did not catch any pets and traps, and we did not have any conflict with the public here. We're really proud of that. We work extremely hard to avoid those kind of situations. So we care deeply about public safety, people, pets, and wildlife. At any given time, we work on a pretty small percentage of the public land in New Mexico, and I'm a wildlife biologist and I have pets, I reprey on public lands, I spend a lot of time doing that with my family. Let me grab that for you. So I, we reprey on public lands, and, you know, it's an important issue to me, so we work closely with the Mexico Department of Game and Fish, BLM, the Forest Service, and others to avoid areas of heavy, heavy public use when conducting our work. For example, in New Mexico, we don't typically use things like M44s, the spring-loaded cyanide ejector, during quail season in order to avoid conflict with hunters who may be using dogs. And we do not use M44s on the Gila National Forest in order to avoid a potential taking of a non-target Mexican wolf. M44s are a very selective tool, they're baited with a fetid rotten meat bait that's not very attractive to most other species. In fact, our statewide non-target rate with M44s here is less than 4%. So this is a restricted-use pesticide, to be clear. Our, our staff are trained and licensed by the New Mexico Department of Agriculture, and they receive annual CEUs to maintain that license. There are 26 EPA use restrictions that go with M44s that are designed to help protect people, pets, and wildlife. So, some of you may have heard about an incident in Idaho last year in which a dog was killed and received national attention. And as a result, we suspended M44 use nationwide when that happened to review, review the incident. And we've made some changes in how we apply the devices and have implemented some additional safety measures. Threatened and endangered species are another area of concern, and in order to minimize potential impacts to those threatened and endangered species, we consult with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service under Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act, and we abide by all of the mitigation measures recommended by the Fish and Wildlife Service. We are also members of the Mexican Wolf Management Team. Wildlife Service's role in wolf recovery is to investigate reported pet or livestock degradation by wolves. We provide copies of those investigative reports to ranchers and resource owners, and they may use those to seek reimbursement for, for their losses. We carry out wolf removals when authorized by the Fish and Wildlife Service and the Mexico Department of Game and Fish. While concern has been expressed regarding the use of lethal methods, it's been suggested that we take fewer or perhaps even no animals for livestock protection. Several years ago, we conducted a survey in New Mexico and found that over 83% of the livestock producers here had implemented at least, at least one non-lethal method to protect their livestock, and over 94% of those methods were still in use. However, most indicated that those measures did not reduce livestock losses to an acceptable level. So non-lethal measures for livestock protection might include things like guarding animals, devices to frighten predators away from livestock, special predator-resistant fencing, moving livestock to pastures that are less vulnerable, and using range riders or herders to watch over livestock. One thing that's real important to recognize is that most of these measures cost money, and those costs are usually borne directly by livestock producers. So Wildlife Service's personnel recommend non-lethal measures where appropriate. Some of these, such as guarding animals, aren't really practical in open-range situations where livestock are scattered over really large pastures, but many producers try anyway. Moving livestock to other pastures is often not an option that's available to forests because they simply don't have access to other areas. And so an integrated approach using both non-lethal and lethal measures is often what's most successful. Concern has also been expressed that we may negatively impact wildlife populations, and as a federal agency, of course, we consult with the Fish and Wildlife Service, and we use the National Environmental Policy Act, DEEPMA, to help us analyze the impacts of our actions. When our work involves game animals or protected species like fur bears, we work under a permit from the Mexico Department of Game and Fish. The coyote is the most prevalent species that we take in New Mexico. Our take combined with sport harvest of coyotes in New Mexico is less than 10% of the estimated population here. Researchers believe that the annual lethal take would need to exceed at least 50% of the population for several consecutive years in order to negatively impact coyote numbers. So some would argue that wildlife managers should just let nature take its course, that the balance of nature has been offended by predator damage management, hunting and trapping, but we've altered the environment for our benefit to produce food and fiber for the world. While this work is controversial in the eyes of some, despite the information I presented today, it helps maintain more production cost for producers, less expensive food supplies for consumers, and provides a partial defense against disease outbreaks like rabies. According to the National Statistic Service, nationwide predators account for more than $111 million in livestock losses annually. The true measure for any wildlife damage management program is damage prevented, right? That's why we do what we do. So how do we do in Grant County? Well, last year, we had agreements with ranchers in Grant County to help protect over 132,000 head of cattle valued at over $2 million. And with the program in place here, there were only 14 confirmed or reported livestock lost to predation. So research has shown that in the absence of a program like this, predator damage management program, calf losses would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 3% to predators. And so using those figures, we estimate that we've prevented the loss of 1,718 head of livestock valued at over $800,000 in Grant County last year. Not bad. Pretty good return on a $24,000 investment in our program last year to protect an important part of your tax base. We look forward to continuing to help people in Grant County resolve a wide variety of wildlife damage problems, and thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions in my app.
Questions?
I'll tell you, I'm going to. Well, I'll start with the budget.
Okay.
The proposal that we have indicates a $25,000 request, and you've just said 37.5. I wonder if you could explain the discrepancy?
Yeah, I, I think I, there, there might be multiple letters out there, I don't know. I know I have a copy of a letter that our district supervisor, Rudy Fajardo, provided to the county for 37.5, so I'm not sure what, what you're looking at.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we did receive an initial letter in the amount of 37.5, however, our work plan and our agreement is for 25,000, and not what we funded last year. The 37.5 is full funding, if the county was to fully fund this program, it would be in the amount of 37.5. So, basically, we're getting full services at a reduced price, so we're getting more than what we're paying for.
Yeah, what we're considering on Thursday is the, is the agreement with 25,000.
So, yeah, the, the 37.5 would represent full funding, and Mr. Jones does spend some time in Hidalgo County doing work down there, so full funding would allow him to be present 100% of the time at Grant County and be more responsive to your, your local needs.
Yeah, which would leave Hidalgo County high and dry.
We have a plan to reorganize if we, if we receive full funding here, so we're not going to leave Hidalgo County high and dry.
And the amount of funding we receive from Sailor Grazing Act fees, which is, I believe, the source of our match, do you know what that amount is, either of you?
Approximately 28,000.
Okay, so we can manage the 25 with just that, obviously. You mentioned the incident in Idaho that indeed made national news. You didn't mention that a child, a boy, was injured as well, as well as the, the loss of the family pet. And you mentioned that that caused us to make some changes in how we apply the M44s. Can you describe what changes were made?
I can. We're a lot more restrictive in the distance that we need to be from homes, dwellings, occupied dwellings, that sort of thing. We're also a lot more personally restrictive in, in terms of the distance that signs need to be placed from each individual unit, whether signs placed on gates, signs placed at each individual unit warning people that we're there. And as I mentioned in, in the New Mexico program, we don't use them much on the forest, more on BLM. But we're also very restrictive there, like I mentioned, quail season where we avoid use to, to avoid those kind of conflicts.
And how detrimental would it be, do you believe, to the success of your program to eliminate their use entirely, since you don't even use them on the Gila or?
Well, we do use them in Grant County, like I said, on BLM lands, on private lands. I don't know the exact numbers, but I think they probably account for about at least a third of our coyote take in this state, so they're, they're a very important tool for us.
And should I, exactly, should I infer from the state-level percentage that it's similar in Grant County?
Uh, probably, yeah.
You mentioned that you work hard to avoid non-target damage. You've just described how you do that with M44s. There are other, what I would have considered indiscriminate approaches, such as setting traps. Are those measures you take with those methods as well?
Sure. To give you an example, our, a non-target take with things like traps and snares that are, you know, also seen by many as being indiscriminate, is even less than that with M44s. So we're talking 3% or 4% statewide with those kinds of tools. But again, in Grant County, our non-target rate last year was zero with those tools.
And I guess what I was looking for was what measures you take? Do you take different measures? I'm just trying to get a picture of how you do your work. We've been some years without a comprehensive report, so I appreciate this information, and I'm, I'm pushing for some more. What, what do you do with the traps and snares? Again, is it signage?
No. We, we do place signage for traps and snares at gates, signs aren't required at individual units. But if you're asking about the measures that we take to prevent non-target take?
That is what I mean, yeah.
All right, so with things like traps, it's, it's largely trap placement, bait selection, and pan-tension. All three of those things help us, we do sort of eliminate non-targeting.
Okay. Pay attention, I assume a light animal doesn't trigger it, that's the idea?
That's correct.
Do you conduct cost-effectiveness analyses of the different methods you use?
Not method by method, no, sir. Like I said, we, you know, we do cost analysis based on the number of livestock that we estimate that are saved from predation, but not by individual method.
Okay, so we have no way of comparing, for example, aerial shooting to other methods you've mentioned?
I'm not sure how we would conduct that cost analysis, but I'd be open to suggestion if you ask.
Yeah, well, I, I probably don't have enough handle on the details to, to have a good answer to that question either. My hope was that the experts had an idea. And I guess one last question, might also be difficult for you to answer, but you mentioned the difficulty of using guard animals because grazing can occur over very large areas in a relatively scattered way. That makes a lot of sense. Some of the reading I've done about using grazing to improve range land involves more intensive, you know, frequent moving of livestock. In that scenario, it seems like it would be easier to use guard animals. I, I assume that seems commonsensical. Are, are growers moving in that direction, do you think, based on the research, for example, at the Savory Institute, places like that?
You know, the Savory grazing system has been around for a long time. There are cohorts in New Mexico that do practice great Savory grazing. It's, uh, my understanding, and I'm not a rancher, but it's my understanding that that's also very labor-intensive. You have to move livestock very frequently. You also have to have a lot more attention, you have to divide up pastures. But I do not know the answer to your question if folks are moving more in that direction.
Okay, but it, it does make sense to you that it would be easier to use guard animals in that circumstance?
Sure, yeah, and there are smaller pastures, guard animals would be more effective.
And, uh, so I'm from Northern California, and I, I used to see the, what I'm going to call llamas, guarding the cattle and sheep, actually. It's quite a sight to see, really enjoyed it. All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Other questions? You have, there's, there's some more people on the agenda that are with you. Would you introduce the guests that are?
Sure will. So we have, you guys probably know, you're, you're local, Ty Bayes here, he plans to speak. The other two guests aren't speaking, but they're, Mr. David Moreno, David is with our Colorado Wildlife Services program, he's our district supervisor in Grand Junction, and, and we have Mr. Ray Pierce. And we have Mr. Ray Pierce, I mentioned earlier. He's out of our Los Cruces office and does assist Brandon here locally sometimes.
Okay, thank you. Any other more questions, then? Mr. Brian? Mr. Bayes? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Ty Bayes, and I'm here representing the Grant County cattle growers today. We have roughly 100 family members within our organization. I wanted to just give a little bit of support for this program and talk about, a little bit about the ranching industry in Grant County. So over the past few years, I've got some numbers. Back in 2012, we had a great year, and we sold almost 30,000 head of, $30,000, $30 million in livestock in 2012. As 2016 counter prices have dropped, someone, we sold just under $18 million out of the county. That represents, and that fluctuates, you know, due to rainfall patterns, anywhere from, oh, low, I think a few years back, about 18,000 head of mother cows, as high as 29,000 some time ago. The program, the ADC program, I would like to point out, as Commissioner Brown referred to, this money's really not tax money that you're using for this program. This is grazing fees that are paid by ranchers from Grant County on BLM lands, and that money comes back to the county and can be used for a very specific, different purposes. The Soil and Water Conservation District, this program, ADC, county roads, and I think some other things. But so it's not, it's not really tax money coming out. Now, in the past, we have had to, when this fund was lower, when we were in a drought and didn't have as much money coming back, the county has had to kick in some money at times. This is a, I've worked with Brandon Jones a lot, and I've got to tell you, he's a real professional, and I can tell you, I know there are some folks that are going to be behind me opposing this program, but you're better off having Brandon Jones out there, ADC, assisting us with this kind of work. He's a professional. He has forgotten more about wildlife than many of these wildlife organizations will ever know. When a lion kills a calf, I'm telling you, that guy can differentiate that lion's track from another lion. I don't know how he does it, but he can do it. Bear, the same thing. Coyotes are a little more difficult, and, you know, he's specific. He gets the animal that is causing us problems, not the, not other ones. I mean, if I go out there, I see a bear, and I lost a calf to a bear, and I kill that bear, I'm not sure I get the right bear. Of course, we have to get permits from game and fish to do all this stuff. But he is very specific. And not only does he serve the ranching industry here in Grant County, you know, anytime that New Mexico Game and Fish Department has a problem bear, problem lion, if they can't handle it, and they're slow on the lions, Brandon Jones is the guy they call in, ADC. He comes in, he's a professional. He's got dogs, can catch these lions. I know you remember a few years ago, we had the pair of lions that killed the gentleman up in Piggles Outdoors and consuming. Brandon Jones is the man that got those lions. He really is a professional. He works on your Grant County area, or if you have issues, wildlife issues out there, he's the guy that, and you have a contract with him to do, with that service to do that. Commissioner Brown, you mentioned the guard animals. Guard animals are fine with sheep, and to some degree goats, but primarily sheep. They just really don't work with cattle, especially out here in the arid southwest where we run, you know, anywhere from 12 to 15 head of cows to per section, that's 640 acres. Those cattle scatter. A guard animal has to be with those animals at all times. Sheep tend to stay in a flock. The guard animals work somewhat successfully, but of course, we don't raise many sheep here in Grant County anymore. It's primarily cattle. And ideally, we like these cattle scattered out where they're, you know, not having an impact in any one area. So they really are not an option for beef cattle in the southwest. You know, this is a good program, they're professional, and I can tell you, I've never seen Brandon take a non-target species. One time, I'll tell you something, he told me, and I know everybody thinks we just go out and indiscriminately kill every predator, and that certainly is not true. One time, I mentioned to Brandon that I was seeing a lot of coyotes on my ranch, and said, "Well, are they killing?" I said, "Well, no, I haven't lost anything." He said, "Then leave them alone. You kill the, you know, the coyotes in that territory, you're liable to allow some coyotes from neighboring territory to come in, and they may kill." So, you know, that was pretty good advice. You know, I don't know a ranch in Grant County that wants to see coyotes or mountain lions or the black bear eliminated. We just, we just, we have to manage predators, just like we do big game animals, just like you do mice and other rodents and insects in your house. You're going to be told here in a few minutes that this is cruel and inhumane? Well, I guess it's no more cruel than putting mousetrap in the corner of your kitchen or rat poison underneath your house. Yeah, you know, I don't know of any way of a diet that's not cruel and inhumane, that's just a fact of life. Predators, like all other species, have to be managed. Thank you, and I will stand for any questions.
Questions, Mr. Bayes?
You're welcome, lady. You know, I'm certainly interested in seeing these fees reinvested in the county. I don't want to, I don't want to lose that. But it seems to me that some of these other uses that you mentioned, that I was going to ask, but anyway, could possibly be more beneficial to ranchers. And I'm wondering if you, the association, have looked into that, whether you'd rather see these grazing fees used for Soil and Water Conservation District or for secondary road maintenance or construction? You know, the latter is certainly an issue we've heard quite a bit about at the commission in terms of need. So it seems to me there's, you know, possible use for $25,000 in secondary road maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, yes, you're right. We would love to see the roads bladed. We really would like to see them bladed. I've talked to my commissioner extensively about that. But I'll be honest with you, $25,000 just wouldn't go very far out there on those roads, I don't believe. $25,000 to the Soil and Water Conservation District, I sit on that board as well, that really just, really wouldn't go very far. And it's, I believe that this money, and about $5,000 of this fund does go to the Soil and Water Conservation District. And it's an important function. But, you know, when you're talking about, you know, conservation practices, they are very, very expensive, and $25,000 is just a drop in the bucket to any one project. I think it's better off spent in this service. It aids in us staying the business, it aids the county, too. I mean, when this service is protecting our livestock, we're paying more property taxes on livestock. I've got some numbers here, oh, I think back in 2016, we paid $184,000 in property taxes on livestock alone. That doesn't include our private lands, our equipment, and the other things. Now, that may sound like Trump change to some people, that's what it does, but that $184,000 is a pretty good, pretty good amount of money. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted, just wanted to let Mr. Bayes know that as soon as hunting season rolls around, we will get to those roads out on your place.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item C, presentation regarding concerns of USDA animal, sorry, plant health inspection, wildlife services, Michelle Lute and Alicia Shaw. Now, I think you were able to meet with some of the commissioners previously. Were you able to meet with all of us? So you've already had considerable amount of our time, is that correct?
Well, thank you for a little bit more of your time, just the commissioner and to the commission, and everybody else that's here. Thank you to the audience and the folks who've come down to talk about this really important issue. So my name is Michelle Lute. I work with Wild Earth Guardians. We have significant membership in Grant County that's concerned about this issue. So I'm here representing those concerns from a number of constituents in Grant County, as well as residents across New Mexico. And I'm also here to represent the best available science, as I understand it. So this is, but so this is the Wildlife Services contract. These are the numbers, as I understand it, that we've received in the 2017, 2018 contracts. $24,000 coming from the county-level frith funds and a federal contribution of 57, over $57,000. So this is $81,000 of a contract that's going to address $1,600 in verified losses. This is based on the one report that Wildlife Services has sent in the last 18 years. And they list in this report methods such as aerial gunning, footsnares, lakehold traps, and these M-44 sodium cyanide bombs. As has already been mentioned, Taylor Grazing Act funding could go towards a number of categories, and most of it currently goes towards predator control, but could also go towards soil and water conservation, noxious weed extermination, secondary road development. And perhaps some of these categories could be addressing fire prevention, things that would benefit most or more county constituents than is currently happening with the Wildlife Services contract taking up most of the frith funds. So I want to talk a little bit about Wildlife Services' current activities, the sort of status quo in wildlife management. I have a master's in wildlife ecology and animal behavior and a PhD in wildlife management. And I've worked on preventing carnivore conflict across the Rockies for many years and in the Great Lakes over a decade. But legal management is, typically uses really indiscriminate, dangerous tools. And these are some of the results of the tools that Wildlife Services is currently using. We see companion animals, particularly dogs caught in traps, and sometimes die. And we see non-target animals, imperiled and endangered species, and other non-target animals like this bald eagle trapped very frequently. So in New Mexico alone, between 2010 and 2017, I'm sorry, this is getting cut off, but this is 43 dogs in New Mexico killed by M-44 bombs. Now, Wildlife Services just stood and told you that their rates are quite low, but I find 43 dogs that were not intended to be trapped, an unacceptable amount of risk. Between 2010 and 2017, in New Mexico alone, 338 animals were unintentionally killed by M-44 bombs. So if you're putting a bomb out that can kill anyone that encounters it, I take exception when calling it unintentional. And Wildlife Services also just mentioned the incident in Idaho. So the rest of this title says, "Boy sprayed by cyanide explosive, by the grace of God, I'm still alive." So I was at the meetings in which Wildlife Services met with Pocatello residents and other residents across the state of Idaho, talking about this incident. As my knowledge, they did not ban M-44s nationwide, but said that they would take them off in Idaho while they decided whether there would be new rules in response to this event. So my understanding of the event is this boy was just a few yards outside of his backyard on BLM land. Idaho, months earlier, Idaho Wildlife Services, had said that they would not be putting M-44 sodium cyanide bombs on public lands in Idaho. So this was either forgotten about and unattended, or just purposefully left on public lands where it should not have been. Their response, while the family sat in the front row at this meeting and asked why they needed to keep using these devices that almost killed their son, their response was, "We'll put up more rules." Despite the fact that we hadn't been following the rules that we already had set in place, we'll put up a few more rules. We'll put up signs closer to these M-44 bombs." But they've shown time and time again that they violate these rules. They were supposed to tell the hospital, the sheriff, the local authorities that they were using M-44s in this area, they had not done so. So when the boy went to the hospital, his father's even a doctor, no one knew what he was exposed to. No one knew what this device was. So putting up signs closer is not going to help children, it's not going to help dogs and people recreating on lands, especially if they're not following their own rules. They even endanger their own employees. Aerial gunning results in many wildlife crashes. The last one was in 2016 in Wyoming. Gunners often shoot up their own aircraft, and aircraft crash because they're flying so low trying to find coyotes. So Wildlife Services fails to take common sense safety precautions. They've shown that this is the case over decades. They fail to be accountable to the public, which they serve. So it's been said that this money from the county is coming from ranchers, which is correct. But there's also a huge federal match, and that's taxpayer dollars that we're all paying to control environmental resources, such as wildlife, that are held in the public trust. So wildlife and our public lands are managed for all of us. So these federal tax-paying dollars, they should be accountable to the public that's funding this work. Wildlife Services fails to be transparent, and they fail to respond on a timely request to congressional inquiries. The inspector general has inquired a number of times about where they stockpile their poisons, which they gloss tons of, sodium cyanide, and they fail to respond to Freedom of Information Act requests by the public in a timely manner. So Wildlife Services fails the public time and time again. Legal management also fails to use selective methods that won't capture or kill impaired species. It fails to protect ecosystem function when you're targeting populations at the level they do. We see ecosystem health and function go down in these areas. And they fail to prevent poisons from polluting sensitive environments. So this legal management that Wildlife Services uses fails wildlife as well. What's more, it's expensive and ineffective. So I just want to take a moment, bear with me, and consider a coyote population. Say, these are two packs of coyotes. In an unexploited population, average litter size might be five or six pups, but summer mortality reduces pup litter sizes down to, on average, 1.5 to 1.2 pups by the end of the summer. So this is an unexploited population, you lose a few individuals, you gain a few individuals. In an exploited population, where exploitation rates, that's hunting rates, are at or below 70%, which is typical, it's really difficult to get above 70% take on a coyote population. We see compensatory breeding and immigration replacing a lot of the animals that get killed in any certain year. So you get more reproducing males and females quickly replaced from either outside populations or packs, or through this compensatory breeding. And this can happen as quickly as eight months, but always within the succeeding year that these reproducing adults replace a lot of the coyotes killed in one year. So heating control leads to density reduction in each individual pack, which means smaller group size, which ends up meaning more food per coyote. So you have improved So you have improved nutritional condition of adults, and you get higher pup birth weights and survival in the long run when you're exploiting a population. But you also add two to three times as many hungry pups. And so that can often result in coyotes targeting larger packages of prey that are more efficient. That means calves or sheep instead of bulls and rabbits. And so this population grows more when you have hunting. It creates chaos, unstable family structures. You can also get larger litter pup sizes and females entering sexual maturity at an earlier age. And that's what I mean when I say compensatory breeding. So really, this creates chaos across the landscape. It doesn't address the conflict. It doesn't prevent conflict from happening. And it might actually be driving more conflict when you kill coyotes in the way Wildlife Services often does. So this is often trying to wipe out a lot of coyotes across the landscape during calving season, just to protect vulnerable calves during that time period. But it might actually be driving more conflict, pushing the buck down the line, eight months, maybe a year. But then you have a larger problem, a larger coyote population next year to deal with. So legal management fails to actually prevent depredation from happening in the first place. It fails to account for this best available science showing that legal management can actually increase conflict, and it fails to prioritize the most cost-effective methods. And I'll talk about cost a little bit later. So in my experience, working across the Rocky Mountains and in the upper Great Lakes, lethal management has failed ranchers when we've been able to count, when we've been able to track these activities over a number of years and measure them with the best available methods in wildlife management. There's a long history of needed reform with Wildlife Services, and this has come to light most recently in Idaho again, where the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Forest Service, and the Bureau of Land Management have all criticized Wildlife Services rationale for their lethal predator control, saying it is not an objective analysis of the environmental impacts. So this is not just me telling you it doesn't work. This is also our federal government and other agencies that are counterparts to Wildlife Services also saying this is not reflecting the best available science. And these calls for reform have gone back since Secretary Udall in 1964, and their first call for reform in the Wildlife Report, the Leopold Report. Also recently, Ninth Circuit District Judge, Judge Windmill, has made these statements after reviewing Wildlife Services activities in Idaho, saying, "It is rare for the court to encounter such a unanimity of critical comments from other agencies." This is referring to the BLM, the Forest Service, and the Fish and Wildlife Services critiques of Wildlife Services predator damage control. He went on to say, "Similarly unconvincing are the agencies' attempts to explain away scientific challenges to the effectiveness of predator control, and the lack of reliable data infects all of the agencies' conclusions." This is a Ninth District Circuit Court judge saying this. So that's the problem, as I see it, as scientists see it, and as our constituents who are concerned about public safety and proper wildlife management see it. But I want to emphasize that I'm not arguing to take away tools without replacing them with better, more effective tools. So we talked a little bit about some of these options already, but they generally fall into four categories. So there are erecting barriers. It's a good old-fashioned fence, basically, but there's even new technology available with these fences. You can have flattery, which is the picture I'm showing right here. That's just a simple line with red flags that keep predators away for weeks to months. It can be solar-powered and turbocharged and very cheap, and that can be extended across large distances. You can also have portable fencing for rotational grazing, which is beneficial for a number of reasons, but lightweight and easy to move. Reducing attractiveness is really important. So as I understand it, from the one report that Wildlife Services has sent in eighteen years of activity in this county, it looks to be that calves are the predominant vulnerable livestock losses. So in the one report, calves were the only losses reported, not adult cattle. So reducing attractiveness could mean removing afterbirth. So this could be key in Grant County, given the issue with calves. But also removing burning or burying carcasses can be very effective at preventing predators from seeing livestock as a food source in the first place. We've also already talked a little bit about guarding with animals. As was mentioned, various breeds of dogs can be used, as can llamas and donkeys, but also people, and this would be job creation. You can cover a lot of territory with range riders on ATVs or horseback. And again, this would maybe only need to occur during calving season, since this is the problem in Grant County. And there's lots of other benefits to range riders. They can quickly find diseased, injured, or dead livestock and treat or determine the cause of death. They can remove carcasses. They can protect sensitive grazing environments and prevent depredation from happening in the first place simply by their presence. There's also scaring techniques. So this is a kit that another organization gives to ranchers across the Rocky Mountain West. And it includes automated light devices, like these foxlights. There's an air horn. There's a pistol with blanks. There's a, what they call a radioactivated guard box or a rag box. This is even developed by Wildlife Services. And this is essentially an automated alarm system that can alert ranchers to the presence of predators, or just to scare them away if they're out in dispersed areas. And I'd just like to emphasize that this works. So Marin County, way back in 2010, canceled their Wildlife Services contract because Wildlife Services refused to respond to their request to stop using poisons. And they were simply just asking to stop using poisons, and Wildlife Services refused to do that. So they canceled their contract with Wildlife Services, as have a number of counties across the West. And what we're seeing is that it works. Once we give it a chance, it works. So in Marin County, for example, this is a collaborative project involving all stakeholders. So this is wildlife protection organizations, ranchers, scientists, county government officials. All sat down at the table, and they decided, "What's a plan that works for us? What do we want to see happening?" So it was very collaborative, and they created a cost share program in which ranchers with twenty-five head of cattle or more are required to implement non-lethal, at least two non-lethal methods, and then they get compensation for any resulting loss. And what we've seen is that fewer depredations have occurred, fewer carnivores are killed, and it's more cost-effective within four years. So this is the Agricultural Commission's Stacy Carlson stating how effective this program has worked. Their losses fell from five percent to 2.5 percent, and their costs within four years fell by fifty thousand dollars. And they're preventing depredation from actually happening in the first place. So what I'm asking you today to consider is reforming the contract or canceling it outright without renewing it, and replacing it with more effective tools that are based on the best available knowledge that we have right now. And I just want to end on a personal note. I want to emphasize that I'm not trying to take away tools. I'm not trying to put anyone out of business. I've dedicated my career to understanding this issue and finding solutions that will work for everybody. And so I hope that this can be a continued conversation where we can work together and talk about how to best serve everybody's needs. And with that, I will take any questions.
Questions? What is the cost of portable fencing saved per acre? Have you all done any of those type of figures?
Yes, and I can give you all that. So in the packets that we've passed out, that has information about costs and links to a lot of resources.
So can you give me the cost?
For instance, flattery is...
Oh, yes, on the movable...
No, I cannot give you the cost right off.
Okay, top off flattery.
Flattery is very cheap. You can do fifty dollars per acre.
Fifty dollars per acre?
Yeah, or cheaper. I mean, it depends on how much you buy, and if you're doing turbocharged, which is electrified, or less.
Go ahead. Top off the range rider.
Range riders? The going rate per hour is twenty dollars a man.
And who would you think would accomplish this type of price to pay? Does your organization supply money to take care of some of these types of protections?
There are a number of nonprofit organizations that do. So the Natural Resource Defense Council is one. No, we do not.
I personally feel that twenty-four thousand dollars is not a huge price to pay when we have this organization going out and helping people when there's a person mauled by life. I think there is no, no, it don't matter what the cost when it comes to the lives of people.
I agree with you. That's why I'm here talking about public safety. I'm not arguing against protecting people.
Well, and I'm just making a point.
Yeah. And if that's what the contract covers and that's the appropriate price, then I'm not arguing against that. I'm really trying to argue for the most effective in terms of cost in preventing depredation around livestock protection.
On your 2010-2017, three-hundred-and-thirty animals in New Mexico unintentionally killed by M-44 bombs, where did that information come from?
That come from Wildlife Services reporting online. So you can look up what they're reporting in terms of numbers of animals killed, dispersed, euthanized.
Can you break that down to our area?
No, they do not give us information on county by county. I can only filter by state. And we've used Freedom of Information Act and the State IPR process to gather this information. We've gotten very vague details on county by county details.
Do we have to have questions, Tom? I just have some comments. I do not doubt your sincerity, but I've spent enough time on the ranch to know that flattery...
Flattery?
Yeah. That the cost of that would be astronomical. And not only that, I kind of go right by it. There's just no question.
Well, it worked for a few weeks. It doesn't work forever. But aerial gunning is very expensive, and I would argue, I've never heard of aerial gunning being cheaper than fencing or flacking.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess what you described as your experience with Wildlife Services is certainly not my experience. And we had a call to game of fish early this year because of my experience. We had a game of fish, the New Mexico Department of Game of Fish called Wildlife Services. And I took no joy in the fact that an animal was destroyed, but the animal was obviously sick and needed to be shut down. And it posed, in the minds of the game of fish and Wildlife Services, and I trust their opinion, and in my own opinion, it posed a risk to the grandchildren that we have that might be planted in the yard. This was not a normal healthy animal. We have a lot of cougars, mountain lion, near our home, and we don't have interaction with them. But on this one particular case, I'm glad that we had Wildlife Services. And I've also just attended a wedding this weekend, and some people out in the cliff area were talking about the services that Wildlife Services provide and how they removed a cougar that was doing a lot of damage out there. And like I said, I take no joy in eliminating a healthy animal. We're talking about animals that operate outside of the norm. Like Mr. Bayes pointed out, all coyotes don't kill. And I'm very cautious about trapping and killing coyotes. We don't allow a lot of that on our ranch because I think it upsets the balance of nature. As you said, and as Mr. Bayes pointed out, you're just opening yourself up to coyotes coming in from outside who do know how to kill. And so when you don't have a problem, there's no problem to address. But I will say that when we've had problems, Wildlife Services has been there. We've probably only used them twice in, maybe a dozen years. But they've been very, very effective. They've done something that we couldn't do. I think they, I think they presented, I guess, you know, with that, without going on and taking too much more time, you used statements like, "Lost tons of cyanide," and I just thought, is that verifiable?
Yes. Yeah, we can send you all that information.
So tons of cyanide just disappeared? Okay. Well, I think I made my, any other questions?
Yes. I often hear comparison of the cost of the program to the verified depredation numbers. Just as often have problems with that comparison, because if the program's working, of course, the losses are going to be small. You want to see small losses. On the other hand, we heard a figure of eight-hundred thousand for the value of livestock saved as an estimate from this program. And based on the methods that I heard described, used, and the caution I heard from Mr. Bayes about how these methods are employed, I found it very hard to believe that that much depredation could have been prevented. Is there, are you familiar at all with any way of objectively estimating the losses that don't occur? Because I'd love to try to get a handle on that, right? Instead of looking, comparing it to the losses that do occur, which I consider completely irrelevant, in fact, an inverse relationship, I'd like to know if there's any, what you consider solid studies on losses that are prevented.
That's a great question. It's a sticky one to answer, and it requires pulling out any assumptions about perceived risks with actual assessments of real risk. But there are a number of studies that have looked at losses. And what you have to do is have a control group that's a very similar situation, very similar context, and then you have to have the experimental group in which you're either doing your lethal or your non-lethal intervention. Because you have to parse out all of those factors, and in a natural field setting, that's very difficult. But there are studies, they're not necessarily answering the question exactly as you're posing it. What they're doing is saying, "Okay, here's the risk that's happening in this controlled setting, and here's the risk, or reduced risk, that's happening based on the intervention." And that's how we have the numbers about what's most effective. And this has only come to light in the last decade, because science only answers the questions that we ask, right? So before, we were really only assessing, "Is aerial gunning better than trapping?" Or, "What level of the population should we take?" So we had no good examples of unexploited populations to even compare to. We, when I say "we," Animal Damage Control, Wildlife Services, has been taking out predators across the West since 1931 or even before. So we really have very few examples, very few controls to actually say. But now, modern science has been asking those questions, and we're seeing, in these controlled, unexploited populations, we're seeing fewer depredations, but we're seeing fewer livestock losses.
So those might be included in the many references you've included here. But if you could point them out to me...
Absolutely.
So I can not have to go through all of these.
Sure.
That would be handy. And it seems like that would be a direct way to address the concerns expressed by the Ninth Circuit Judge that you mentioned. This is not an objective analysis. So the more objective analysis we can get, the more rational decision we can make in the, in the, what I think are relatively minor differences. I actually think a lot of us agree on a lot of points, in particular about protecting public safety. The concerns I have about some of these traps, similar to the concerns others have about attacks by wild animals, that we all are trying to protect public safety. You all have gotten from the proposed amendments to this contract, these amendments would not cancel the contract. I believe we should be investing this money here. But they would deprioritize lethal methods, and they would make most lethal methods unacceptable in Grant County. They would allow, however, hunting specific problem animals with rifles, but that would still be allowed. I would really appreciate feedback from you all about those proposals. I'm sure they could use some tweaking. But if we keep the focus on cost effectiveness and public safety, I'm hopeful we can make improvements that we all agree to. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any further questions? Any further questions? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentation Concerning Letter from Grant County Businesses Regarding the Impacts of the Holloman F-16 Training in Grant County. Ms. McAnally.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to distribute the letter and the list of businesses that have signed it, so just to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being put on the agenda today. The last time I spoke with you on this issue really was on March 6th of this year, when I discussed the negative impacts of the F-16 flyover proposal concerning quality of life, real estate, and land values. Once I left that meeting, I actually attended a Silver City Main Street Project merchants mingle where there was a lot of concern from the businesses. What can we do to have our voices heard? And so, we developed a letter, which I will read in a moment so that it is in the record. We had 152 signatures of shop owners, realtors, and businesses ranging from Walleye Silver City Cars to Maronis and Co. So, you can see you have a great diversity there. July 17th, 2018, "Grant County Businesses Oppose the Holloman Air Force Base Proposal from Military Training Over the Gila. We, Grant County Business Owners, oppose to the proposed action of Holloman Air Force Base to expand its military operations area over the Gila National Forest in the wilderness area, Silver City and surrounding communities. This action would include 10,000 annual assortments, 10% flown at night, 10% supersonic, and sun as low as 500 feet above the ground. The Gila Wilderness Area, the county's first designated wilderness, is a national treasure. While we support military preparedness, we strongly believe that the Gila Wilderness is an inappropriate place for military endeavors. According to the National Park Service's town map, southwest New Mexico is one of the quietest regions in the country. Grant and Catherine Counties are renowned for the relaxed atmosphere, natural beauty, dark skies, and the national forests and Gila Wilderness. Many people are drawn to this area for its exceptionally high quality of life. The local economy is heavily dependent on tourism. A 2016 independent study by Tourism Economics documented that in 2015 tourism generated $54 million in Grant County and $15 million in Catherine County. This trend is expected to continue as development accelerates in other parts of the country. As business owners, we are extremely concerned about Holloman Air Force Base's proposed action involving an average of 30 military jet flights daily. This unlawful intrusion into our quiet, peaceful community will fundamentally alter our way of life by decreasing tourism and will greatly diminish our business income. The commission may think that their voice won't make a difference with the Air Force. I think it will. And most importantly, your voice will mean a lot to your constituents and to our local businesses. Please add your voice to the more than 24,000 citizens, 2400, excuse me, citizens that have commented on the environmental impact statement. We encourage you to write a letter from the commission opposing the Holloman military operations over the Gila and Grant County as soon as possible. Are there any questions or any additional concerns?
Questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Agenda Item E, Jack County Assessment Report. Mr. Trudia.
Mr. Chairman, we did receive the proposal presentation a few weeks ago, and I know we went ahead and held it off for today's meeting, actually for Thursday's. I did speak with Charlene where I can actually put it on this agenda. So, did everybody have an opportunity to go over the presentation? I do believe that I've had comments from the majority of the commission.
Right. Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. I would actually, if it'd be okay, I would possibly, if anybody has any questions at this moment, we can go ahead and disclose it. I know you guys have a lot on your plate, just like I have a lot on my plate. However, I did have a conversation with Charlene last Friday, county manager. We had such a good conversation about not only the budget, the reappraisal fund, and not only about the correction parcel mapping. So, we did come up with some agreements, and if anything that I want to bring about would probably be for the 30th of July. The only thing is, is I would like to, I would like for, just to make a couple of quick statements on the presentation on the copper, because I know we haven't discussed this, that copper production, we're actually in a 20.3 million lower compared to 2017, and that's like about a $240,000 valuation loss when it was rendered for the certification. We actually sent out our certification for the state of New Mexico and got an okay by the state from Property Tax Division. And matter of fact, we did get a quote stating that that was one of the easiest certifications that they processed. But I just wanted to bring up that one in copper because I know you guys haven't received that information.
How much does that mean to your bottom line?
Well, actually, if you look at the bottom line on revenue cost for the operational budget, you're looking at about 240,000, and that's under the 11.50 mil rate. And that is maxed out on the non-residential. I do believe, I guess, Ty Base, he actually came in and wanted to speak about the cattle. And I know I've talked to Commissioner Castin where there have been substantial loss in valuation in the non-residential due to the cattle. So, we've gone from about, actually, when Ty came in, I had to run and generate some numbers right off the bat. 2016, you're looking at about 8.7 million, and 2017, you're looking at 6.7 million, and 2018, you're looking at 5.1 million. So, that has actually done a lot of adjustments on my non-residential rate, where from the valuation maintenance to the net new, so we did see a loss on the non-residential side. However, on the residential side, you're looking at about a 3% increase due to the cap rate. Not only that, I also spent some time with the county manager with the yield control formula on how the rates have been arrived, and I actually listened to that presentation, plus the presentation that I'm talking about right now. I know it could be an extensive, probably a good 35, 40-minute presentation that I could sit here and I spoke to Charlene this morning, our county manager, and she says, "Do you really want to do that?" So, I know you guys read all this. So, if you guys have any questions on anything, please, please let me know at this moment.
I appreciate that. I'll go ahead and review that. Questions?
Well, so quickly, because you and I have talked about this a couple of occasions. You mentioned 34 field visits for grazing and ag appraisals. And I share your interest in making sure that that program is used by legitimate users and not by folks who buy a lot and lease some cattle and thereby avoid property taxes. How have those field visits gone?
Matter of fact, let me go ahead and get to that information. It's about a 30-page presentation that I have, so it's up to you. Actually, in 2017, the number cast, we're looking at grazing 34 visits. Matter of fact, over the last five months, we've actually had livestock accounts of 840 and 1,380 occurrence with 20,594 animals. Business personal property was 640, but we'll just talk about the livestock. The field visits were limited in 2017 due to the lost time plan. And not only that, of 2018, we aggressively reviewed property receiving the special method evaluation, where the good reason of the question is applications of all rates. So, any applications that we are actually getting new, we actually go on and do the field visit itself. In 6-1-18, 50 field visits have been conducted this year with 100 open work orders, so actually they have been dealt with 34. And we do have probably about a lag, about five or six months.
So, I guess I should be more specific. So, let's take these 34 in 2017, and you don't have to answer me about 2018 yet.
Okay.
Some of these, I assume, were to verify whether somebody was running a race to qualify for the special valuation or not. Is that, is that right?
Uh, excuse me, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown. Yes, and I'm so glad that we clarified this. There has been quite a few that have been applied as a special method evaluation and denied due to the fact that they did not qualify for the special method evaluation.
And were those appealed?
There have been a couple of appeals, and we actually are having the informal hearings at this moment, and possibly they will probably go to protest in September. And it is actually on the slot of September when we go for the protest vote. But there is a couple of large accounts that they did contest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Trudia? Thank you.
And once again, I'll send you another revised version of the yield control formula and also this, this presentation itself. And thank you very much, the county manager, for having, you know, conduct our businesses last Friday. Like I said, I got a lot on my plate, just like you guys have a lot on your plate.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, and you guys have a great day.
Thanks, you too. Agenda Item to review the regular meeting agenda. County Manager, what?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I do want to rearrange the orders and jump down to the resolutions, item R, which is approved, disapproved resolution R-1818. The resolution authorizing question to be presented to the public by the election of Grant County, New Mexico, on the ballot for 2018 regular general election concerning the proposed issuance of general obligation bonds and other lines relating thereto. We're going to let Lalee talk about that. We have discussed that, and it's referencing the geo-bonds that we've discussed over the last few months. So, she's got a presentation on that.
Yes, good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My name is Lalee Danny. I'm at Tiltop Securities. I also have my colleague here with me, George Willeford, and it's our pleasure to serve as financial advisor to the county. We're just here to introduce discussion and answer any questions that the commission might have with regards to item R on your agenda that you'll see, which is consideration of resolution to place a general obligation bond question in the amount of $6 million at the November 6th election ballot. And this is really just follow-up and continuation of the discussion that commenced back in March and that we revisited last month at this commission's June meeting regarding the county's general obligation bond program. So, just by way of recap, as you will recall, we were able to determine that based on the county's total assessed valuation of around $850 million, the county's total general obligation bonding capacity stands just in excess of around $32 million. Now, with the recent retirement of the county's Series 2005 and Series 2009 general obligation bonds, the current mill levy rate that stands at 1.138 mils will support the issuance of $6 million of general obligation bonds that will allow you to finance public projects without imposing any increase to property taxes for residents. So, this is in line with the county's conservative fiscal approach, and based on discussion during last month's meeting and subsequent direction that we've received from county staff, this is contemplated to be issued in two $3 million tranches, or of course, based on project needs as determined as we get closer to issuance. This would allow for the availability of proceeds to be timed to project needs, and would also address any concerns with spending down the funds in a timely manner, as was raised at the last commission meeting. And, you know, of course, as we get closer to issuance, we'll work with the county assessor and county treasurer on sizing and timing of these issues. So, based on the direction that we received subsequent to last month's meeting, we've worked with bond counsel and also with county staff. Bond counsel is the Rhodey Law Firm. And we've worked to draft the resolution that you'll see in your packet, and I believe the Rhodey Law Firm sent out a revised version yesterday afternoon. You should have that updated version in your packet. And this would authorize, again, general obligation bond questions in the aggregate amount of $6 million to be placed for voters to consider at the November 6th election. And so, county staff has determined that the use of proceeds will fall into two broad categories. Obviously, firstly, there's a need for improvements to roads here within the county, and I think there's general consensus around that from our discussions with county staff and also with this commission at prior meetings. But also, there seems to be a need for some, to finance deferred maintenance items and capital projects and improvements to public buildings, so things like parking lots and roofing and replacement of HVAC systems. So, because the statutory authority that would authorize these two uses of proceeds comes from two separate statutes, in working with the Rhodey Law Firm, they've advised that it would need to be placed to, it would be, it would need to be put to voters in two separate questions. So, that's why you see in your, in the resolution, you'll see that the first question deals with remodeling and capital projects related to improvements on public buildings, and then the second item would have to do with new or improvements to roads. So, what's really left for this commission to determine is, you know, assuming that everyone is in agreement with the use of, the broad general use of those proceeds, it would be to determine how much would be dedicated for each of those uses. And so, we, you'll see that in bracketed amounts, we've put in $2 million to be dedicated to remodeling of public projects, and $4 million to the second question of roads. But again, those are preliminary amounts, they're kind of just placeholders that have been determined based on our preliminary discussions with county staff. And so, that's why we're kind of here today, just to kind of get direction from this commission as to what amounts you think are appropriate, and we'll have that revised and placed on the resolution that will be considered at the meeting on the 19th. So, if there are any questions or anything else that I can answer for you, I will be happy to do that.
Questions? As usual? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm trying to get a good grasp of the timeframe of different decisions. On Thursday, in two days, we approve the general idea of going forward, approve the general amount of $6 million. But then, is there a chance to better define the projects we want to fund in the month after that?
Yes, there's definitely an opportunity to better define. So, this would allow you to, you know, so we purposely requested the Rhodey Law Firm to draft the questions broadly enough that it would allow the county some discretion and some leeway in determining the use of those funds, but also targeted enough that it's not just, you know, people actually know what they're voting on.
So, that latter is my interest, not the discretion part. I would like to see much more specific language on the ballot than what is here. And so, I'm trying to figure out if we approve this on Thursday, do we have a chance to change the ballot language in the following month to be more specific?
So, the answer is yes. So, the drop dead date to get the question, the actual phrasing of the ballot question to the Secretary of State is 70 days before the election, which would place you towards the end of August, around the 26th or 27th, I believe. So, assuming that you would like to redraft the question in a manner that is, cannot be accomplished before the Thursday meeting, there's definitely an opportunity to redraft that and target the, target the language at your August meeting.
Yeah, so I don't know about my fellow commissioners, but I don't feel like I've had really any ability to analyze some of these projects, county fairs, juvenile detention homes, public libraries. It's a wide variety of projects.
Oh, right. That's basically just language that's been lifted out of the set.
I'm sure, right, I'm sure.
And that can be stricken or, you know-
Much- Much more, right. I'd be quite interested in being more specific than that on the ballot, so people know what they're voting for.
Do you need to be more specific than that to vote on this resolution?
Right, I'm just saying, I do not, as long as we have August, right? That's my point. And I'm trying to understand, try to get a sense of what my colleagues here, it sounds like everybody's hopeful to get more specific than that. Both number one and number two include water sewer sanitary land use systems. I guess that's also from statute, statute allows that to be in either of these two categories?
Yes, so one is with, so I think the reason why they left the water projects on there is that sometimes when you're rebuilding roads, you run into some issues with flood control and water, and you run into pipes and stuff like that. So it would be advisable to keep that on there.
I see. Okay. I think that's all I have, as long as we're focused on having a better consideration of this, maybe even a public hearing separate from the August meeting to consider the actual project.
Also, just keep in mind, so the Rhodey Law Firm wasn't able to make this meeting, but they will be here on Thursday in order to answer any questions or further target the language at your direction. They'll be able to answer questions about the actual statute or language and stuff like that.
Is this something you'll be talking to us about, Misha?
Chairman, Commissioner Brown, on Thursday, is that okay?
Yes.
I can be here on Thursday.
Yeah. I don't want to overstep my bounds. Go ahead. No, that would be, I would love to hear some priorities from staff.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, the priorities that we have been discussing in regards to the public facilities, those were identified in our ICIP.
The courthouse roof, the parking lot.
The parking lot, this roof, Silver Street roof, a number of needs that were identified over the course of the last few months that we've discussed with you. So it's not something that I, you know, intended to be a surprise to anyone. We have discussed it, it's on our ICIP. At this point, we do not have a targeted list of roads. We're still trying to identify what would be, for lack of a better term, this is the best thing for our book. Do we, do we look at paved roads? Do we look at dirt roads? Do we? And that takes a little time for us to analyze. So that's why we don't have a specific list for you today.
Okay.
Do you anticipate having that for the August meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the roads, whenever I hear about, you know, millions being spent on roads, I wonder if we can't spend thousands on trails, so that it's roads and trails. That's an interest of mine, so that commissioners know. Is there, is there any stake or concern I should have about including trails?
I can pose that question to the bond counsel and just make sure that it's captured in this language, but I will confirm that and let you know.
Okay.
Dave and I have been working on trying to get a trail.
Yes, you have.
Santa Clara, there, six years.
It's one of the many points of agreement among us.
So I guess my question might be better directed to the county manager, but as we present this to the taxpayers in the fall, will you have a plan? I mean, obviously, you do. I guess I'd like to hear more about what your plan is to get buy-in from the taxpayers so that this isn't a fail, Misha.
It would be an education, educational effort on all of our behalf, from county staff to you. Once we identify what our projects are and how we intend to spend that money, then it's, you know, I think that the hospital bond election is a perfect example of the lack of education and being too broad with the description. I think it's a matter of doing the proper education. And I know county staff is prepared to do what we need to do, but, you know, the constituents are going to go to you, and we will do our best to educate you on what are needed.
Okay. I share those concerns. Thank you. That's what I wanted to do. Any other questions? Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And you can stay there if you want, if we have any more questions on the next item, or be ready to hop back up there. So now I'm ready to jump to item Q. This is a really long title. Approved/disapproved resolution R 1819. A resolution determining that Grant County, New Mexico, State of New Mexico Department of Health lease appropriation bonds, the Fort Bear project, Series 2008, maturing on and after July 1, 2019, known as the bonds, be called for redemption based upon the Department of Health exercising its option to purchase the Fort Bear Medical Center facility, declaring that the county is exercising its option to redeem the bonds, approving a form of agreement between the county and Department of Health regarding notice of redemption of the bonds, and providing for the Department of Health to engage consultants to complete an appraisal and improvement survey title commitment and Phase 1 environmental report in connection with the exercise of the option to purchase the facility, delegating authority in connection with the agreement and taking related actions. So it's a really long title to say that the Department of Health has exercised its option to purchase Fort Bear. This is in the lease purchase agreement that was done back in 2008. The bonds will be redeemed at this time. Department of Health has submitted their formal request to exercise this option. I am working with Department of Health and Hilltop. They will step in and assist us in the redemption of the bonds. There is an agreement that is tied to this resolution that there are certain deliverables in the lease purchase agreement that states that the county is responsible for the appraisal, the survey, title insurance, and the environmental. Due to a relatively aggressive timeline identified Department of Health, Misha and I did not have the time to be able to meet their very aggressive time schedule. So preliminary agreement was that Department of Health would execute the delivery of those items. They would conduct the, they would hire the appraisal, get the appraiser done, appraisal done, title insurance, all of those four items. The cost of that would come out of the proceeds. I don't know if you want to explain to them how the redemption of the bond will work, assuming you have questions regarding that.
I'm happy to answer any questions. So basically, how this came about is, you know, back in 2008, the legislature determined that this lease appropriation agreement was approved between DOH and Grant County as the conduit issuer, because, you know, DOH does not have the ability to issue bonds to finance this type of project on its own. And since then, rates and the market have moved quite a bit. And so there is, you know, quite a bit of savings to be had on refunding these bonds. And so that discussion has kind of been, you know, had commenced a number of months ago and has been looked at a number of times. And, you know, in this most recent effort, it looks like DOH would like to go ahead and exercise their right to purchase and go through a different conduit issuer and buy the county out of its interest in the lease purchase agreement. So that's basically all that's happening here. We, you know, the conduit issuer has yet to be identified, but there are savings to be had on the redemption of these bonds. And so Rhodey Law Firm, again, has been contracted to look at the contractual language and the lease purchase agreement and make sure that everything is done in accordance with legislative authority and the law that's been drawn out. And we're just kind of there to help advise as needed if the county needs to get involved in any capacity.
Just for the audience, this clarification, and probably everyone knows this, we're talking about Fort Bear Medical Center, not Fort Bear.
Yes, sir. So if there are any specific questions that I might be able to answer.
Okay, thank you.
In your packets, you have three sets of minutes for your review. Any corrections, please submit to my Nisa. Moving on to financial reports. Item C, approved/disapproved July 13, 2018 expenditure report. And I would just like to make one exception before I turn it over to Linda. I almost had a heart attack when I looked at the amounts, but there are two months of several expenditures such as fuel, big ticket items. There are two months on this, on this report. Closing out the fiscal, fiscal year, fiscal, fiscal year. Okay, Linda.
The expenditure in the package covers the area in June 6, 2018, the line here, 2019. The total amount of each check is $2,633,412. Included in that package, in these expenditures, is a check to downstream aviation in the amount of $11,795. And this is for a cell serve fuel terminal at the airport. A check to ascent aviation in the amount of $20,102.89. And this is for jet fuel that was purchased in May. A check to the Southwest Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $47,785.90. And this is for tipping fees for May. A check to Wright Express Fleet Services in the amount of $29,455.18. And this is for fleet fuel charges for May. A check to ascent aviation in the amount of $40,944.18. And this is for jet fuel that was purchased in May and June. A check to Bank of Albuquerque in the amount of $241,858.44. And this is for the debt service payments for JRT revenue bonds, the 2014 series. A check to Caterpillar Financial in the amount of $11,977.83. And this is a lease payment for June and July for motivators at the rail department. A check to Core Values in the amount of $48,695.40. And this is for inmate healthcare for June. A check to Gerard Phillips, Kate, and Hancock in the amount of $38,805.50. And this is for consulting services for April. A check to New Mexico State University in the amount of $15,917. And this is the fourth quarter contribution of fiscal year 2018 for the co-op extension services. A check to ABIC Solutions in the amount of $37,296.88. And this is a progress payment for the emergency generator at the airport. A check to Morrow Enterprises in the amount of $135,77.56. And this is a final billing for the storage tanks at Lower Mootes Volunteer Fire Department. A check to Western Builders in the amount of $45,056.35. And this is a progress payment for the San Arilo Volunteer Fire Department Station. A check to Ascent Aviation in the amount of $19,823.96. And this is for jet fuel for June. A check to Hull Ray Construction in the amount of $43,595.23. And this is a final billing for the Silver Senior Center building renovations. A check to Juniper Advisory in the amount of $17,382.82. And this is for retainer fees and services for June. A check to Advanced Communications in the amount of $18,639. And this is for handheld radios and accessories for the volunteer fire departments. A check to Ascent Aviation in the amount of $19,785.51. And this is for jet fuel that was purchased in June. A check to Anima's Valley Excavation and Electric. This is in the amount of $10,044.89. And this is for cleanup and removal of the Hachita Fire Station. A check to Ascent Aviation in the amount of $19,802.25. This is for jet fuel that was purchased in June. A check to the Grant County Manager's Office in the amount of $25,470.86. And this is for administrative fees for March and April for Corica Minosa, the transit department. A check to Summit Food Services in the amount of $22,659.66. And this is for inmate meals and snacks for May. A check to Xerox in the amount of $17,269. And this is for copier at the courts office. A check to Costco Industries in the amount of $13,016.40. And this is for thermal cameras and gear for Whistler Creek Volunteer Fire Department. A check to Ascent Aviation in the amount of $32,475.50. And this is for aviation gas that was purchased in June. A check to Core Values in the amount of $46,859.99. And this is for the inmate healthcare services for July. A check to Southwest Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $54,565.97. And this is for tipping fees for June. A check to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $34,348.35. And this is software renewal for the Eagle Recorder. A check to Wright Express Fleet Services in the amount of $29,292.82. And this is for the fleet fuel charges for June. And also included in this report are payroll checks totaling $605,429.88. And this is for pay period 12, 13, and 14. So the total sum of this expenditure report is $3,236,041.88. Any questions?
Any questions?
If there is aviation gas and jet fuel? Is aviation gas left to propellers instead of jets?
Could be either way.
Could be either way.
As a propeller.
Propeller, but it's add gas.
Okay.
It's an actual gasoline. Jet fuel is much closer to diesel fuel.
Trying to learn more about my jet. And there were six payments to, is there a reason we don't just pay them, you know, net 30 once a month or something?
It's just spelled according to the way we receive their invoices. It's done in a period.
And it can't be much work, I'm sure, but I'm surprised we don't storm up.
We pay our own invoices.
Yeah.
Actually, they just extremely doesn't.
I guess so. I'm sure that shows up on the weather.
I mean, when you listen to Gate, it didn't sound like much, but we did send a lot of fuel.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Moving on to new business. Item F, approved/disapproved letter of support from Village of Santa Clara to annex the old Fort Bear Hospital tract. Mayor Bausch will be here on Thursday to discuss this with you. In your packet, you will find his request.
Is there any conversation you can have now about that, so that it's not just same day?
I did meet with Mayor Bausch about two months ago, and I really think it's a great idea for them in annex, just so they can take advantage of any growth receipts that might be generated by any type of construction in that area. I know they have some big plans, and I really feel that if they start receiving pieces and working and proving themselves, they could be able to do a lot of great things there. But all in all, this request is just to give them a letter of support for their annexation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, item G, approved/disapproved New Mexico Association of Counties voluntary employment employee loan credit counseling benefits in partnership with True Connect. We had a presentation a couple of meetings ago from Susan Mays with, I'm going to mess this up, it's now called New Mexico Counties, in regards to the True Connect program. This is a benefit that's offered to employees. Commissioner Brown, you have some questions in regards to procurement? Jacob Zamora, our procurement specialist, has done some research. We reached out to the Finance Director at New Mexico Counties, reached out to some other counties, Abby Techwood Attorneys. We are not finding that it's a requirement to, under the procurement code, to place this forbid.
Thank you for research, ma'am.
Item H, approved/disapproved a letter to New Mexico Department of Transportation for UTV use.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. This is a new letter to the NMDOT. As you know, this commission approved a letter, oh gosh, I think it was back in November, requesting certain roads. And in that letter, it would even ask for certain speed limits to be lowered. Through the time since that first letter was sent to the District 1 office in Deming, I've been working with Trent Doodlo, the District 1 engineer, and his staff. And based on their commission policy and the requirements that are in that commission policy, this is what they can stand behind and support. So I've redrafted the letter for your review. It is specific to recreational areas, as opposed to the Senate bill, which talks about the ability for agricultural and ranching. The commission policy does not take that into consideration. And since we are asking for an NMDOT-owned and managed roads, it is narrowed down quite a bit. So I stand for any questions that you might have on that. So I stand for any questions that you might have on that.
Are we still asking for the lowered speed limits?
No.
Okay.
That's been taken out entirely.
On all five stretches?
Exactly. Yep, the stretches that are being looked at are in this letter, which if approved by the commission, then myself and Trent Doolittle will present to the Department of Transportation's Commission at their Milan meeting, I believe it's in September.
So I guess that's a little confusing to me because we have the sheriff's letter who still includes those, that's just for historical reference.
Exactly.
Okay.
So in your discussions with Mr. Doolittle, has there been any discussion about who or how law enforcement is gonna happen on these roads? And I'm asking that specifically because I cycle on 15 quite a bit. And there are tons and tons and tons of alcohol containers all over that road. Whose responsibility is it gonna be to enforce the DUI law on those roads?
I believe it's gonna be the same as it is right now, which is gonna be New Mexico State Police and the Sheriff's Department.
And that's, will they take that into consideration when they look at approving or disapproving this? Do you know, do you have any idea what the hearing's gonna be like?
I have no idea. This is actually a first for District One. Yeah, the only one that I know that's been done is Red River. That's the only one that's actually been approved, so I don't know how the hearing went. I haven't seen anything on it. I do know that there are several other communities and counties that have requests into DOT right now. If we get this one through, we'll be the first for District One, but they do have another one that they're reviewing also, I believe, in the area.
And I'm glad that you brought up the trash that one had. I don't think you could correlate all that trash to this document here or to the users of those roads when it comes to ATVs or that type of vehicle. So I don't think that has anything to do with this, but I really do think that we need to do something about that trash and try and figure out how we could work together with the State Highway Department or something. I know we had talked about our inmates getting out there and helping us out, although that's been stopped because they just can't unless they're actually sentenced to do this correct. So, but I do think we need to figure something out because our county does have a lot of litter throughout. And I really think we need to do something about it.
So I wasn't actually, thank you for those comments, Commissioner. And I wasn't really actually trying to correlate that with increased ROB use, but that has been a general concern of mine for a while, is the amount of alcohol related trash on that road. And I've never seen law enforcement on that road. And I've always assumed that it's state control, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, that being said, how has our ordinance been working for you, Mr. Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ronald. We've not had any delay with it too much, so apparently it's working the way it should be.
Good.
Have you had any issues with it?
Or maybe no one's taking advantage of it. Does anyone even know? I personally had not, one time when the females were still up, I was just saying, hey, that's legal now.
As we were working the election, there was quite a few people going to vote on their ROBs. That's San Lorenzo. So it's very interesting.
Well, I found this letter most compelling, I voted against the last one. From this glance, so far, it looks like it's important, so, thanks.
Moving on to item Y, approved, disapproved out-of-state travel to Washington DC for myself. Mechalad is the planning director to attend a White House conference for New Mexico Counties. I submitted this all to you to see if you were interested in attending. None of your schedules allow for that. Therefore, I am making a request that he and I be able to attend. Our travel policy requires that any out-of-state travel come before you for approval. So I think you know what the conference is about and why I think it might be beneficial for us to start attending and working a little closer with our federal delegation on cabinet secretaries.
Really all out-of-state travel requires approval?
Yes, it does, under the current policy. I'd be willing to put that in front of me to reconsider if you'd like.
Appreciate your willingness to go.
Yes.
Mike, it's not the schedule, it's just the inclination.
I understand. I was trying to be polite about that. I wasn't gonna go there. Next, item J, approved, disapproved revised 2017 PERA Volunteer Fire Annual Reporting Form for Plutilla. PERA sent that back for some corrections. Once it's corrected, you have to approve it again. Moving on to agreements, approved, disapproved agreement A 1816, Work and Financial Plan between Grant County and the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Services, otherwise known as APIS Wildlife Services, which we discussed earlier. Commissioner Brown has distributed some amendments for your consideration, so, leave that for you then.
Yeah, is there any discussion on that this time?
Not this time, I would you.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, item L, approved, disapproved agreement A 1817, Professional Services Agreement between Grant County Surveillance Program and Felix Ortega. I want these together. Item M, approved, disapproved agreement A 1818, Professional Services Agreement between Grant County Surveillance Program and Luis Alvarado. These are annual agreements we do, this is for the surveillance program for adult and juvenile offenders. It's the GPS ankle monitoring. This is the program that Margaret Bege runs. Item N, approved, disapproved agreement A 1819, Between Grant County and High Desert Humane Society for the provision of animal control services in the unincorporated portions of Grant County, New Mexico. There was some additional language inserted into this agreement that was from the request of High Desert Humane Society. It has to, it pertains to occasionally, because of law enforcement-related seizures and court-related cases, there are a large amount of animals that they are required to hold for an extended amount of time, which is very taxing on their budget. So what they requested is additional language in their instances where they hold cats or dogs over 14 days, that we would pay the actual expenses above that 14-day time period in order to ease the impact on their budget. I inquired just of a cost estimate of how much we would be looking at. So they based it over the previous three years, and it was about $2,500 that they had incurred. And this was due to a couple of large seizures and animal abuse cases. In my opinion, it's a lot easier for us to absorb a $2,500 impact than it is the humane society. So therefore, I agreed to put that language in the agreement for your consideration. Any questions on that? Otherwise, the agreement remains the same. Item O, approved, disapproved agreement A 1820, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Operation Stone Garden. Sheriff, do you wanna, you wanna maybe explain what you do with this, from your perspective?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Pretty much what this Stone Garden grant does is it allows law enforcement to assist via secondary to the Border Patrol down on the border. It allows for the deputies to go down, down towards Hachita in our area of Grant County and work operations as a secondary line of defense. And all this is done during hours after work. And usually, the way we're doing it now is the deputies are doing it on their days off and they are getting compensated, getting paid overtime to do this, and it's being paid out of this grant. And I think it's very beneficial to help alleviate a lot of traffic that goes on down there. And it's been cost-effective to us.
Questions?
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Next, item P, approved, disapproved agreement A 1821, bargaining unit contract 2018 to 2020. I am going to request the table as again. I thought we had come to an agreement, and I learned late yesterday evening that we're not in agreement. So I'm going back to the drawing board again, therefore, I would request the table as to August.
Sure, ma'am. Sorry to interrupt, I did actually have a question for the sheriff, if I might. No, and I didn't at first, but I just wanna know if there are any changes in this contract at all from last year?
No, actually, everything's the same, only the only requirement they're doing is they're a little more stringent on how we utilize the funding that they're giving us. So pretty much, we're utilizing mainly for overtime, fuel and maintenance on the vehicles that we have, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, scope of work is the same.
Pretty much the same, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for that interruption.
Skipping to item S, approved, disapproved resolution R 1817, A Resolution Amending the Position Classification Schedule and Compensation Plan for Grant County, New Mexico. This is a resolution to amend the salary range for a maintenance technician position certified, which means that we would have the ability to hire someone who holds a journeyman's license. Our goal is to hire a journeyman electrician for this position to alleviate costs that are associated with what we're required to have an electrician come into buildings to perform duties. For example, we can't even hang out our own bellies anymore, so we are having to contract outside services to come in and do this. What we've done is we've absorbed two positions of regular maintenance technicians to create this position. Did some research on salary for this type position, and realized we needed to change that salary range to be a little higher. We did meet with the union for several months on this to get their buy-in, and we do have that for sure. We weren't going to put this in front of you until then. So this is amending that plan to change that salary range for that position. Questions?
Is this a journeyman or an actual contractor?
It's a journeyman. Item T, award reject request for proposals for professional services, RFP 1805, and contract regarding engineering, environmental, archaeological and surveying services. And Jacob is going to explain, this is a little bit of a complicated RFP, and he's gonna go through where we are and what our recommendation is.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So what we did with this one is we combined the four, typically because each is, one deals with the other. But at this point, we are only asking to award the contract on the engineering side. You guys have a copy of the contract in your packet. We are recommending that we award to Soder Miller and to Houston Bohan, or Brad Bohan and Houston. On the environmental and archaeological, we are still in negotiations with the top firm right now. We're trying to iron out a couple items. And on the surveying services, we're recommending that we reject all proposals. One proposal was deemed non-responsive. And based on the ones that we do have, I don't feel it would be cost-effective to award to those firms for small projects that will have surveying, small lots, items like that.
So the idea is to reject all this and then re-open it?
Yes, only on the surveying side, what we are gonna do is we're gonna change the scope, make it a little bit different than what we previously had. But the ones that did submit, we did receive good proposals, but as far as cost goes, I don't feel it would be beneficial to the county, especially in those small projects.
Questions?
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Next, item, approved, disapproved, June 2018, health fund claims in the amount of $72,670.65. There are 27 claims to Hila Regional Medical Center on the amount of $65,833.40. Seven claims to Hila Regional Medical Center ambulance in the amount of $6,837.25. And I have reviewed these claims with our medical provider. And there are no changes to this report. And that is all I have.
Okay. County report, Mr. Lars, could we start with you?
Chairman, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. On the Santa Rita Fire Station, we have a few punch list items that are still pending. So we're holding the final payout on that until we get the final punch list items completed. As you heard, we have the final pay for the lower members. We are complete with the lower members' water storage. On the asset management plan, I was hoping to have a draft plan for you guys to review, but through the internal audits, we did find some things that are missing. So we're gonna be working on that for a while longer. I discussed this with County Manager Charlene Webb, and it is in our best interest to make sure that we have a very good, solid asset management plan before we bring something to you. So I apologize for that, it will be a little bit longer. On the ICIP, we discussed several of those items, been working on that for quite a while. And I hope to have a draft version of the ICIP to you as a commission board by the end of the month. I'm very close to having something done, so. And of course, a lot of that needs to happen because we're talking about those for the bond, so. Rosedale Road, the readiness to proceed items are completed and have been sent to the colonists board. And we just need to get the final documents from them for the grant agreement, and then we can prepare the items to go out to bid. And Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department addition is a new one that we're working on. We do have the bid documents prepared, and we hope to have that out to bid by early August, don't we? Any questions?
Questions? Tell me, I did have a little distraction, I hope you didn't talk about this, embarrassed myself with. Tu Casa, you're, did you talk about that?
No.
Okay. So where are you on the, you're on the final stages of identifying the few last remaining problems?
Yes, Tu Casa is complete in terms of what we had for the contract with White Sands. We do have several items that are gonna be warranty issues. I was gone for the last 10 or so days, and I received some emails from Jason. I do need to get back with him now that I'm back in the office, so I can get that list over to White Sands, and they can come out and make some corrections. We're still waiting on some additional items that were outside of the scope of the initial contract with White Sands, that we have a different contractor that's gonna be doing some flooring items there. But that's, I think, as of right now, HMS has even taken control of the building, as far as I'm aware.
Great, thanks. Mr. Villal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you heard from Mr. Hogan on the fire conditions in the Hila, I did speak with Milo Lambert, Chief of Silver City Fire. They pulled their restrictions, fire restrictions, the Hila has pulled back on theirs, and so Grant County will follow suit with them. And as of today, we will lift the fire restrictions. I did get an opportunity yesterday afternoon to kinda drive the county a little bit in areas. Of course, as I was driving around, it was raining, so that was a good thing. It is beating up a little bit, but I still want people to, we're gonna get into those days. The next 10 days are gonna be hotter than usual, so it doesn't take much for those fine fuels to dry up. So I just want people to be aware that even though we lift the fire restrictions and we're into the monsoon season a little bit, is to still be cautious on burning and making sure that they take everything that they need to do to protect if they're gonna have any type of fire. Obviously, the airport, a lot of the resources have moved on, as Mr. Hogan said today. So it's gonna slow down a little bit more as far as the fuel, as far as the fueling, going back to just filling boutique, and that's gonna take a little bit of heat off of us of having to have somebody at the airport quite a bit. I think we did a real good job. I wanna thank Rebecca, I also wanna thank Linda and Charlene as well as working, knowing that the fuel was very important. very important, and having to get that fuel to us, is that there was times that we were ordering fuel like twice a week. And so, and those are coming in 7,500, you know, the truckload was 7,500 gallons of jet eight. So with that, we didn't have a big fire season as far as the volunteer fire departments on the wildland side. We did have quite a bit of structure fires that we were able to assist through the silver fire or out in the county where, you know, we had to bring different departments together. So we'll see how the rest of this year plans out. We are, there will be some fire departments applying for the 2019, 1819 grant. I just received that, got it out to them. Hundred thousand dollars is the limit on those grants, so, and there will be a small match. On the other thing, we did get, receive a grant, educational grant for file, fire, wildland fire risk reduction program. I get that out. And I am in conversations with some neighborhoods in Grant County, talking to the fire departments. We'll be doing some public meetings, getting some paraphernalia out there in terms of getting the people educated about fire-wise communities, fire risk reduction. Again, the chipper is available. I do have that. It's kind of slowed down a little bit, but now that the rains have come, it's going to pick up a little more. I've had some calls, people wanting to lease the chipper from the county. The park, maintenance is doing a great job of just trying to keep the park up. We're doing a little bit of touch-up, painting the bathrooms and stuff like that, and making sure that the facility is used and clean. And I want to thank Kevin for taking charge of that and making sure that our communications with him and the maintenance department has been right on. So I want to thank him for taking that extra duties on and doing a great job with that. So, Mr. Do you have any other questions? That's all I have for right now.
Questions?
Thank you. Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Mayor, my report for this reporting period. Item number one, on our detention update, currently have five vacancies, but we're also, right now, we're looking at doing backgrounds on five applicants for those positions. Item number two, on our training update, Sergeant Galindo's monthly training report. Sergeant Galindo has completed all the required training for the newly hired officer. He's also been conducting all of the transports, district court, and medical, while he's not doing his training. Item number three, in our inmate intervention, the inmate art subcommittee has been, we've been meeting during this reporting period. Inmates are continuing to participate in creating new art material. Just an update on some of the Tucasa, the Tucasa subcommittees have been meeting monthly, discuss progress with the facility. The Tucasa Advisory Board is scheduled to meet in August, still yet to determine the date. Also, I received information from HMS on July 31st, Tucasa is going to, they're scheduling some mock scenarios at the facility, so they're asking some of the users and providers to be there, see how those things are going to go through. As far as I know, that's still on schedule. Item number four, in a community report on July 3rd, I was asked to speak at the Silver City Rotary. My report consisted of challenges and changes at the detention center. Item number five, we're awaiting nominations for employee of the month. Item number six, our detention facility statistics, average dating population for July 10, 2018 is 88, three more than last reporting period. High population males, 65, four more than last reporting period. High population females is 23, which remain the same. Currently, for July 10th, there were 83 inmates who were incarcerated in the facility, which is two more than the last month booked into the facility. And your CJI 5 report is there for your review. Item number seven, on our monthly total arrests for June of 2018, Silver City Police Department had 72, Grant County Sheriff's Department 25, New Mexico State Police 27, Barrett had seven, Santa Clara seven, Hurley had one, New Mexico Gaming Fish had one, and that was all the arrest totals for the agencies. We currently have one adult on probation, actually at parole. There are three inmates being held at, for another facility during this reporting period, and those were from Lord's. Item number nine, our detention facility transport probation warrants and special management statistics. 28 district court transports, Division One magistrate court had 27, Division Court magistrate two had three, and that was all of the court transports for this reporting period. Medical transport during this report period, total 20. So the total number of all transports equals 78 as compared to 57 for last month, and the reason for that was medical transport had a slight increase during this reporting period, and magistrate court Division One also had an increase in transport during this reporting period. Probation violations, 35. Parole violations, we had two. Inmates awaiting transport, sentenced to another's facility or rehab. We have two that are awaiting transport. Total number of inmate charges of warrants is 65. Total number of special management inmates for this reporting period is 12. That's my report, sir.
Thank you.
For the record, the first advisory board meeting for Tucasa has been scheduled for Thursday, August the 9th at 1:00 at the convention center.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. I feel like you can ask for whatever you can tell us about the death on Saturday morning. So you can answer that? He didn't even include it in his report, however. I understand that.
Okay. Commissioner.
Mr. Matt.
I just wanted to point out that we, or I, got an email communication from the United States Department of Transportation just prior to coming into this meeting. I guess if I have any comments, I just wanted to point that out. You can look for that, and I guess that's all the comments I have.
You can do all that?
I think you should have, yeah. With, and that's in respect to service provider at the airport, whether it would be, who's the carrier would be.
Do you forward that? I would appreciate it.
Okay, you have to see it? Okay. It was an email from Scott Falk. Okay, I sure will forward that to you.
Thank you.
Anything else, then? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Trump. Oh, well, I just saw that we did have this executive session on here. We're not going to, we're not going to session.
Is there a need to go into the executive session?
Is there any need for this question? Because I was going to ask, I was going to ask if there was any possible way to come up and make a decision. I know it's not on there.
Is it blocking?
Yes, we're in a work session. We're not going to.
Yeah, because we really need to get this done.
I was actually looking forward to the chance to share some information about possibly capital expenditure commitments and get reactions from you all about those. I guess I thought we were going to have a chance to chat. Since we want to make this decision Thursday, I think the more communication, the better.
Mr. Kepstein has an appointment. What's the pleasure of the board to meet about that on today or Thursday?
Well, I was, maybe it's only 10 minutes. Would you be able to make 10 minutes?
Five.
I'd love to do it today.
It's only my baby boy's 18th birthday.
It'll be that all day.
Yeah, but they're meeting after lunch in 10 minutes.
Really? That's an early lunch. All right, so can we meet for five minutes? I'll just share some information.
Is there a motion?
So.
To go into the executive session in accordance with New Mexico statute, Town and State of 1978, 10-15, Bench 1, H, subsection H, and it's been moved?
A second. If it wasn't already.
All of the favor.
Yes, everyone, I'm going into executive session.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Everyone who are going into executive session?
Yes.
Thank you.